No, so this is it, so it is 6:30.
This is it?
Isaac's ready.
Tommy, join up?
No, he's taking his burp to the hospital.
Hey, Isaac.
Hello.
Hi there.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right, thanks. Make sure, oh, good.
Hi. Um, all right, do we have any need to amend the agenda this evening?
Um, just that other warrant.
Oh, right, we're adding the warrant of $3,048.14. Let's drive a motion to adopt the, uh, agenda as amended.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in all, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
I gotta wake up here.
Yeah, you gotta pay attention now.
I know.
I'm important tonight.
I know.
Oi importante.
All right, anything of the meeting minutes of February 7th? I saw nothing of note. All right, town managers report.
Alrighty, um, attended the Chittenden Reservoir Emergency Action Plan Meeting on February 14th. There was discussion on sheltering and vulnerable population needs during a dam breach of the Chittenden Dam. Um, they've updated the inundation maps, uh, to include areas of Otter Creek Corridor up to the Cooley Bridge, so part of Proctor and Pittsford weren't in those at the time, so they've adjusted those. And what, they're having a siren test on May 14th, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll let you know, and there's, um, minutes to the meeting attached here too. Um, Alicia and I attended the Legislative Breakfast in Rutland on February 12th. Uh, State Treasurer was there, the main presenter, he was the main presenter, and the hot topic of the day was the proposed education tax.
Shocker. And it's on the governor's desk, as of today.
Yep. Um, Chad and I attended a DMV seminar on road postings and weight limits, um, on the 15th. It's a good refresher for both of us on following the proper procedures when posting roads and bridges for weight limits. And we also had a discussion on spring road postings, which are in our packet, and, and what, how they're properly posted so they can be enforced. Attached to my report is a quote for the Bobcat Zero Turn mower, which we briefly discussed a meeting or two ago. The price is forty-seven, $4,750. Um, we've got twenty-seven hundred left in the mowing budget, and, um, we have line for, for outside maintenance for $2,000, um, in the water department. So, just wanted to, let you guys know that, um, there's a picture of it in here and stuff, and if there's any questions on it. We do not have a mower. We have an old walk behind, a 36-inch walk behind, that, someone they got for the disc golf course.
Oh.
Is it being used?
They use it for the disc golf. It's stopped by rec, but it's, it's just a 36-inch walk behind, so.
Is it in the garage? Where is it? I don't know if I ever seen it.
It's in the shed up there.
Is it? Okay.
This is supposed to be our third mower.
This is a mower for the highway department.
This is a Z-turn mower, so, cause we're, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna contract the mowing, so this would be the guys to do, like wastewater and the town stuff, and the village green, and all the other areas, the sign, the welcome signs.
So it should save us money in the long term.
If they run into trouble with just one mower, they could probably work a deal with the rec area or something to tide them over.
We could figure something out, yeah.
It almost ought to have a backup mower.
Right.
Hey there.
Rec area has more or something.
So, you know, it should save us money, cause we won't be contracting that every year, and the guys have time to do it.
If it don't work out, they can go back to the old system.
Yep, um, one thing I did add on that's not on this one is, um, Chief Hempel came to me on the fire department. The fire department, the host company, has a 1960 fire truck that has sat in the garage at Omea for, well, hasn't been registered since 2018. And they just, they wanted to just let you guys know that they're hoping to try to sell this thing, cause it, it hasn't moved in six years. So it is registered and owned by the host company.
So was that the truck on site, or is that just an old truck?
No, this isn't, no, there's two trucks up there. This is an old one.
This over in Florence?
Yep, yep, so, we're hoping when that goes, we'll move the boom mobile up there, so that PD can have more room in the garage here.
That boom mobile was never supposed to be out here. I don't know, you don't know that, but I do. That was, when that garage was built, that was for the police department and the rec area to store their equipment in the wintertime, so it wouldn't be vandalized over there, and the boom mobile found its way in there somehow.
It's pretty tight in there, so, um, Bill just wanted me to let you know that.
Who is out of place?
Leave it at that.
I think the host company's voting on it Friday. I think they have a meeting, so.
Okay.
Um, and then I have
Good idea.
Just some quick rec stuff, um, Liz, Liz, poor Liz, she's been out sick this week. Uh, Vermont Soccer Association is sponsoring a free soccer program for Lothrup students through, third through sixth grades. Um, two spring disc golf tournaments coming, uh, one to benefit American Cancer Society, and the other is part of Women's National League. Uh, community workdays are being planned for the disc golf course and hiking trail systems, and, um, Liz is organizing volunteers to assist, so if you know anyone that wants to pitch in. And Pittsburgh Townwide Yardset will be on June 8th. Registration's available at myrec.com. I think that's all I have tonight.
Okay, uh, any select board member remarks? Kinda low on select board members this evening.
Wanna go first, Joe?
I'm waiting for you.
No, you can start.
Do you have anything, Joe?
Well, when your orders come up.
Oh, okay, but yeah.
It's not time for that.
Okay, yep.
Um... Just a little bit, um, it came to my attention that there might be a desire for an excavator to be purchased for the highway department, and I think if that's something that they really do think they need, that we should make sure we have it in next year's budget, or at least plan for it, if that is the case.
So we do have it in the capital fund for equipment replacement in highway, which I can, I can give you the numbers for the next meeting. So there's, I think there's 200 and something thousand for the capital, the equipment fund for highway.
All right, well, I think you probably should spend some time reviewing that, and see if it does need to be in there. We should at least plan ahead, so it's not sprung on us at some point, but I think if they need it.
Wouldn't we still keep our backhoe?
Well, a backhoe discussion's coming up.
Right, that's
More to come on that.
That is on the agenda, so we'll
But I do think if that's something we gotta look at, then, um, at least in our next session of budgeting, we should make sure that we keep that in our thoughts. I don't wanna just pull it out, but I think we should at least keep it in our thoughts.
Right here.
And I do think that if, if there's a possibility for a good used one, I think we should consider that higher than just buying a new one.
There seem to be plenty of good used options available, and, you know.
As long as we have plenty of time to think about it and look about it.
Easily put the word out.
We should budget it in whenever it comes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I'll let you know what's in that equipment fund too.
Okay. Um, all right, well, I have something I would like to say, so, um, other than town meeting, this is Joe's last meeting after 20 years? So, and I'm not sure, I'm hoping this is still a surprise. I don't know if you know that we dedicated, you are one of the dedications in the town report for this year, so.
That doesn't, I don't know if I deserve that.
You do.
Oh, God, yeah.
I know, so I just wanna, I wanted to just read this, okay?
Thank you.
So, uh, Joe grew, Joe grew up on the family dairy farm on Corn Hill Road here in Pittsford, on land that has been in his family since 1880. Joe was interested in more than farming, and after helping a local mill owner cut and sell some logs, thought it might be something he'd like to continue doing. After buying equipment from a mill that was for sale in Whiting, he set up the mill on the farm and started cutting wood in 1958. For years, Joe farmed and worked the sawmill, but in 1979, when his son Ken came home from college, they began to run the mill full-time. Joe, one of the hardest workers around, still found time to serve Pittsford. He was a surveyor of wood from 1971 to 1990, selectman from 2003 to present, as well as fence viewer from 2007 to present. So thank you, Joe, for all your service to the town throughout the years. And it was a pleasure, pleasure.
That's awful kind of you.
So, Joe, how many fences have you viewed?
You know, it's only been two or three occasions, oh, while I was surveying timber and wood for a long time, and then somehow or other, Linwood Bovee was, uh, he was on there for, uh, fence viewer. And then I got switched over somehow or other to fence viewer, and Jack Fox and Lin, and Frank Bovee were on there. Well, both of them have passed on now.
Saying you've outlived them both.
I don't know if I've got any help or not, or if I'm all alone on that.
Oh, no, no, you have help. Mills was put on, then I was put on, so. You've got three fence viewers.
I forgot that.
I haven't done a fence yet.
I've only had one or two cases where, there's never been much activity in that department.
I don't really say that, because we rid you about that, as long as I can remember, so. So thank you, Joe.
It's a pleasure. I, I really have mixed feelings about quitting, but, uh,
Yeah.
Although I've developed some health problems that's got my concern, and so I'm, figured while I can walk out, I better walk out than have them carry me out.
Thanks, Joe.
Yes, thanks, Joe.
I appreciate it. It's a pleasure working on this board.
Yeah. All right, do we have any public comment tonight? No? Oh, yeah.
Um, I had a question, maybe you might be able to answer it. I was hoping Tommy would be here, but of course, he's not. How prepared are we as a town for a mass casualty incident?
Oh. Are you guys discussing that in the, uh, emergency manag, or was that specifically for?
Like a hurricane, or something like that?
No, I'm talking about like, somebody goes and shoots up the Dollar General, or a church attack, or the trains go boom.
So I, I know that police department's done quite a few of those trainings, Joe. I'm not sure what the fire department's done for mass casualty, but they do a lot of scenarios for active shooter and stuff with the police departments. Um, I could certainly ask Chief Warful about that, and Chief Hempel.
Yeah, the police have done, so.
Yeah, there's been quite a lot of that lately. I don't know for fire, though. I'm certainly
It's a good question, Joe.
Yep.
Yeah, cause I mean, with everything that's going on, you know, uh, there's a very good possibility that we could be affected, and, you know. Just something, how are we as a town?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
The other question that I had, the old hemp farm on Whipple Hollow Road, I was looking at it, and it said it was approved by the town for expansion.
Where?
Anybody?
Greenhouses over on Whipple Hollow, where they
That's in West Rutland, isn't it?
Is it West Rutland?
It's listed as Pittsburgh.
I thought it was in, I thought it was part in Pittsburgh.
Oh, you think?
It's listed as Pittsburgh on the sale.
Is it past, um, what's that one last road that goes to the
It's right before Cressy's Old Dairy Barn. That's like
South of Cressy's, yeah. That's gotta be West Rutland. The town line is clear up top of the hill, this, north of Cressy's.
So I thought some land must be in Pittsburgh.
So then maybe they need to change their listing, because it's listed as Pittsburgh.
It might have a Pittsburgh zip code.
Actually, no, I think it's listed as Florence.
Yeah, it probably has that zip code, that's why.
With Cressy, I don't think it's Pittsburgh, so. He's right beyond it, so.
That is West Rutland. Not that it makes any difference, I mean.
No, but you wouldn't know what the
Well, right, so we don't know, yeah.
Expansion approval would be, so.
I would think if that was us, it would've come to the zoning board and everything, so.
Would've heard something about it.
I think Joe's right. I think it is past the town line.
Is there anything going on over there now, or is it?
It's for sale.
I see.
I believe released, and I was looking at possibly opening up a hobby shop over there with outdoor tracks and such. So I was just, you know, cause I mean, I'm thinking about possibly having people who come for a race bring their RVs and, you know. So I didn't know what kind of expansion was approved by the town. I know it's about 10 acres over there.
That started out, they were raising tomatoes there, if I remember right.
Yeah.
It was hydroponic, yep.
Yeah, and then they went to, uh, hemp.
Well, that kinda
And then it's, it's been sitting empty for the past couple of years. I know it's listed for sale, and and it's listed as Florence, I believe, so I figured
Yeah, okay.
You guys were the ones, but I guess not.
Yes, yeah.
Then, in that case, that trail that I was talking about, that the camper was parked at, was also West Rutland, cause that trail is just beyond. It's the Whipple Hollow Trail, I think it's called.
Okay. I've never, I don't know where that is, specific, like.
If you know the, uh, place I'm talking about, the farm, northeast, not northeast cannabis, but northeast something or other. It's on the left-hand side, if you're going out towards, uh, West Rut.
Okay.
Just north of that, there's a little short street that goes out in there. And that used to be, years ago, Jim Harrison lived out in there, was a little farmer, and then he had his own mill there one time. But, uh, there's a road, there's a cemetery up, over in there, too, on that little road, and, and if you go out that little road and kinda keep to the left, I've had a truck back in there, three quarters of a mile, driving logs out of there, that might get you back into the town of Pittsford, but, uh...
It's one of those middle-of-nowhere kinda places. It's probably West Rut.
I know, that's
Our place is listed as both Pittsford and Florence, where we live on Fire Hill Road.
Pretty sure Cliff Cressy was West Rutland. I know his land was in West Rutland.
Well, when you come by Cressy's, you kinda come up onto a hill, and just as you break over that hill and head down, the town line is right there.
That's, yeah, that's West Rutland.
Can actually see a paving, pavement line change from where the town's paved at different times.
Oh.
Sometimes it's noticeable, but I'm pretty sure there's a town line marker on the side.
Yeah, I believe there's a road sign. It says Pittsburgh, and then West Rut. Just don't remember where exactly it is.
Yep, okay. All right, um, we have no old business, so let's move on to new business. Uh, Pittsford Village Farm Public Hearing Loan Closeout.
So Isaac Wagner's on remote, and a couple folks in the back here from the Village Farm, so, um, I guess, want Isaac to take it away, or?
Yeah, he can introduce it.
It's all yours, Isaac.
Okay, you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep, good. Um, well, like, you're, uh, you're probably wondering, uh, didn't we just have a hearing about this? Um, and in fact, we did, we sort of did, uh, with each CDVG grant, and this is kinda nationwide, uh, you have to do a hearing upon application, and then you have to do a hearing upon closeout. Um, the last hearing we did was an application for the next CDVG grant. Um, this is the closeout for the first CDVG grant you got. Uh, so the first one was a planning grant. It's a $60,000 planning grant to assist with, uh, the Pittsford Village Farm, uh, to cover mainly, uh, uh, pre-development, uh, design and environmental expenses related to developing the farmhouse, and to childcare and housing. When you start doing, when you start using the level of federal grants, you know, federal financing that we've used, that we're using on this project, uh, the, so the due diligence gets really high, and the, and the project costs go up, and so this planning grant was intended to offset some of the costs for that. So we've indeed spent it all. In fact, um, Anne, is Anne in the room somewhere there?
No.
No.
No, well, David, uh, you, you should be getting the last, um, deposit, uh, from the state. Should be arriving tomorrow on the bank account, so we'll keep, uh, I'll contact you tomorrow to, people look at that. So the, um, Pittsford Village Farm has incurred the expenses. We've invoiced the town. The town has drawn the grant to its fullest extent. We've done what we said we were gonna do, and we've paid, uh, what we said we were gonna pay out, so, uh, the particular issue on this, the particular thing that this helped us with was the environmental due diligence, which is really high with federal grants. Uh, so we hired environmental consultant, we hired an architect, uh, we had project manager, uh, made a bunch of individual expenses, all of which have been shared with Anne, so Anne and David, they, they have the whole ledger of what we paid for. Um, so, uh, this is a hearing that provides an opportunity for the public to comment or ask questions. Uh, and, uh, and certainly I want to allow the, uh, Pittsford Village Farm representatives in the room, if they have any further comment, uh, uh, please be sure, but please pipe in. Uh, but in the meantime, um, I'd just like to leave it open for questions from the public of the select board.
Anybody have any questions?
Only thing I'd like to add is, thank you very much to the town to be in the intermediary on this grant, and helping us get these funds, and with our planning and our architect costs, and, and thank you also for the, the next grant coming up. We're looking forward to hopefully getting construction started before the end of this year.
Okay.
I have a couple questions. Who is the architect for your project?
It's, um, Duncan Vesnevsky, out of, uh, South Burlington.
As I say, not local, then?
Yeah, well, it's
Out of South Burlington?
Hour away, yeah. Michael Vesnevsky is the project architect.
Who's the project manager?
Well, I'm on the chair of the building committee right now, so I'm pretty much managing the various
Oh, I thought he said he hired a project manager.
Isaac's, Isaac's help is our development consultant.
Yeah, basically Terry and I manage it together. Uh, the, part of the grant paid for my services, a portion of the grant, and you just gotta pay for my services on this.
Okay, I was just confused. I, I heard who you hired for, and I was just wondering who that was. So there's no real project manager, it's just between
Not yet. We're planning to put it out to bid to contractors, and then there'll be a project manager.
Oh, from the contractor that gets the bid, then? Okay.
Yes. So the way, I mean, the way we've sort of organically worked this is I'm the project manager with respect to grants management, managing these grants, applying for, managing these grants. Uh, Terry is our herder of cats, and he's the one that keeps our development team on track and moving forward, uh, on the project. That's how we've, but, but I guess as Terry pointed out, once we get a general contractor on board, then, then it changes into something more recognizable. I think you'll have a
Okay.
A, a project manager that is, uh, that is hired and employed by the general contractor on the project.
Do you have a project engineer as well?
Yeah, I see Robert Clark's number. Uh, Otter Creek Engineering is our, is our civil engineer on this site, and we have a couple of other, uh, firms that are taking a role in, uh, mechanical and electrical as well.
Engineering, Engineering Services of Vermont, who's mechanical, electrical. They're from Rutland, um, so it's mostly local engineers.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Anybody else?
I don't think so.
No, great. Well, um, well, I, I'll just echo Terry's comments. Thank you very much for your support. It's been very, very critical and helpful, and, uh, and, uh, I just have, I have a really good time working with the staff. I think, uh, you have a really good staff there in the office, and it's been really helpful to, um, to push this through, to
Great. Well, thank you very much. We all done, set with that?
Thanks, Isaac.
All right, guys, well, if, uh, you're done with me, I'll
Yeah, I think that's it. All right. Have a good night.
Take care. Yep. Bye.
Okay. Gosh, I almost knocked my coffee over. All right, so, um, I guess now we have our Plains Road sewer presentation.
So Robert Clark is here from Otter Creek Engineering. Um, I do have the plans that he sent to us, um, in your packet. We do have to look at, uh, continuing engineer services for bidding construction phase, and they do have their, their ASR in here for that. And then just a small set of the plans. They're pretty simple. Um, we're hoping to get this out to bid tomorrow, actually.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, so we can get contractors lined up. It's a great time to get bids out, so.
Okay.
Um, you with us, Robert?
I am. Can you hear me okay? I've been having some trouble. I'm out of town right now, so.
Uh, we can hear you okay right now.
That, that's perfect. I apologize I couldn't be there to meet you all in person, so unfortunately, I'm down in Kentucky for work, actually. Um, so I, uh, Dave and Sean had asked me to kinda come here and, and maybe be available to answer some questions. Essentially, the scope of the project is actually, uh, replacement of about, uh, 3,800 feet of, um, sewer main, which had been identified for replacement, um, in part due to the amount of infiltration that's been coming in. You know, that, that ends up reducing the overall capacity of the wastewater plant. It impacts your downstream pump stations, and it's been, um, you know, my understanding is that it's been a priority project for the town of Pittsford for a number of years, and unfortunately, there's just, there's always something that has to, has to happen, so it hasn't happened quite yet. Um, but we think there's an opportunity, um, to move forward, and there's been some interest locally from some of the local contractors. You know, there's, there's an abundance of state and federal money available, but a lot of the projects that are being funded through that really haven't moved forward. So I get a few calls a week, uh, from some local contractors kinda asking when we might have projects coming out to bid, so it could be a good time for, for the town to go out to bid. I will say that the, um, that the pricing is still a lot higher than it would've been four years ago. You know, we, uh, unfortunately, I, I've seen pretty much the pricing almost double in the last four years, and it's stayed pretty consistent. Um, you know, over the last six to nine months. I think the estimate that I provided is a good estimate. We had some recent bid results. Um, as Dave mentioned, it's a relatively straightforward project. We're off the road. We should have, uh, for the most part, we should have minimal impacts to, to residences and, and traffic. And, um, so hopefully, we'll get a really good competitive bid, if that's the direction that you all would like to go.
So you, you said, uh, this is pretty straightforward? There's no real concerns you have along this shot of doing this?
Yeah, we, um, we've completed some onsite investigation. We actually recently went out a, a couple weeks ago, and we hired a camera company to come through and camera the sewer, so we could identify more of the sewer services. We had a hard time getting older records on where some of that information was, so we, we tried to limit the amount of unknowns that we would have on the project. Um, and in the estimate, I've, I've carried, uh, you know, um, a little bit of contractor time to be able to dig up and, um, exploratory for some of the unknown service locations, cause there's a couple we couldn't quite identify where they were. Uh, but in general, I think it's a, a fairly straightforward project. We don't expect any significant problems with it.
And infill filtration you mentioned, is that coming in from water seeping in, or just the age of the pipe that's there? Where is it coming in from?
My understanding is it's coming in through several of the failed joints up through there. There's a lot of pipe that's, um, either wasn't completely constructed the right way. I don't, I don't wanna say that, but there's some, there's some bad joints up there, and there's, um, some areas where the water's coming in. Sean, if he's, I, I can't see everybody in the room. I don't know if Sean's there.
No, he's not.
He kinda indicated that it's, it, it's somewhat seasonal, you know, to me, that, that depended on what's going on that year, and where the water table's at, and stuff like that. They'll see a lot higher levels, which is pretty indicative of leaking pipe joints, and, um, I don't wanna say it's the age of it, cause it's a relatively newer section of sewer. Um, it, it has had some other replacements done in the past, but I think, um, some of it is older, and, um, and there were clearly some, some problems when we camered it.
I'm guessing this looks like pretty easy digging then, right? Through here?
We were
Sand, yeah.
It's all sand. That's what, that's what everybody's told me, that where they dug up there, it's all sand, and should be relatively easy digging.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
No ledge to fight with.
Robert, wasn't there an issue with the pitch on the line too, that it wasn't really?
That was the, that was the major thing, so thank you for reminding me that, Dave. So, um, the existing line is, uh, for a lot of it, is really, really flat and shallow. It's, uh, less than the design slope that we would target right now, which is problematic. In part because there's not that many houses on it as you work your way back up the road. So the new design, what's shown on those plans reflects putting the line at the appropriate slope, so that we won't have any, uh, of the issues that we've had related to the fact that it's just too flat in some areas. The other thing is it, it realigns a little bit of that infrastructure down by the Dollar Store, um, so that when the state project comes through, that it can all kinda tie in right there and, and move on to. So, um, we did consider that in the design down at the bottom.
Dave, how far up is this going?
3,800 feet.
Where is that about?
Um, I think, Robert, isn't that the manhole that's just past the town office, right? It's not quite the plain road.
The last house on the system up there is, uh, 549 Plains Road.
We're 426 here.
What is it here?
426.
Probably the one on the corner.
I got a couple questions. Will this, replacement of this line extend the length of what it is serving right now, or is it just a, a replacement of what the existing line is?
That's a great question. It's a, it's a true replacement of what the existing line is, uh, but by putting it at the right depth, you should have the ability to extend it a little further or connect other properties in the future. We didn't go through and see how far you could extend it, um, but, but they could always connect with a small pump station too. I think I think there was always concern that the line being at the wrong slope was going to create problems if they connected a few more homes to it.
Because where it ends now, there is, in my mind, there might be a future need for that service to be extended, and whether this would be, you know, work right into it. I'm just curious, I guess. And another question I had was, has the funding been pretty much set up so that we know how we're going to pay for it?
We earmarked ARPA money for this.
And depending on what bid's coming at, I mean, this, Robert's estimate's a little bit higher than what we have for ARPA right now, but I think we'll know accurately. A couple of things, and correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, we don't have to do Buy America on this, right?
Correct. So through the town's ARPA funding, you don't have to do that? You don't have to follow some of the other provisions that work through, like, on the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, what they would require you to do today with that funding? So it is a little bit simpler. It allows for a little more straightforward procurement process with the contractors, and hopefully should simplify the amount of time it takes to do the project, too.
And they don't have to follow Davis Bacon wages either, which usually jacks up the price. So that's a good thing.
Is that the Fed rate?
It is, yeah.
That's what that is.
Okay, good.
If in the future, this line was to be extended to accommodate further down through that area, would this line that would be put in be suitable to add more to? Or would we be faced with changing the whole thing again if we wanted to make quite an expansion?
No, you wouldn't have to change the whole thing again. There's one, so as Dave mentioned, the last manhole's pretty close to the town office, and then it goes to a series of small diameter pipes, combination of six and four, all the way up to that last house. And so what we're doing is we're running a new eight-inch main all the way to the end so that everybody's connected into the eight-inch main at the appropriate slope. If you look at the plans, probably the only thing that you'd want to do in the future would be to maybe just shallow up that very last section of pipe that we have, so it's about 298 feet on the plan sheet C5. It makes the excavation a little bit deeper, but that might get you an additional couple of gravity connections to it. We didn't do that because there's only one house connected to it, and I didn't want to run it at minimum slope with one house connected to it right now. So that's really the only thing that I would consider changing, but it's such a shallow excavation up there, it really shouldn't cost that much to put that last 298 feet in compared to the rest of the job. And if you look at that profile down through there, we did lower it in elevation a little bit and cut through the hill a little bit more. That way, we could make sure that we had adequate slope, and you could get some increased connections if you wanted to in the future.
Is that the end of the run, right there?
Yep, right to the end, right?
Yeah, that's the last house that we're aware of that's connected to the system right there. And as Dave mentioned, if you follow that back, you'll see there's a manhole down back by the town office.
Yep.
But if you look at that profile, part of the reason why some of it's expensive, some of it is pretty deep. You know, it's 10 to 10 or more feet in excavation. You know, typical pipe excavation is six to seven feet deep, so it is a little more complex for a section of that, which adds to the cost.
Robert, I have one question. For paving, I could look in this and figure it out. I'm going to ask you. Are we doing curb-to-curb paving after, or are we trench paving?
That's a good question. The estimate that I gave you just includes trench paving, mostly because there's going to be a small amount where we're in the road. So if you imagine coming up around the corner to make that work with the angles, the pipes end up getting out in the road a little bit, but most of the project is actually going to be off the road, which helps keep the cost down.
Okay.
That's good.
Thanks.
And just to be clear, we're putting new services to the right-of-way for every residence, and we're going to put an access cleanout there, which will clearly define ownership between the town of Pittsburgh and the private property owner, and also for the town to know that they, all the infrastructure that the town's responsible for was constructed and tested and meets all the requirements and is a sound pipe.
Did we, do we have to make a motion on this? Because we, did we not already do, when we set aside the ARPA money, did we not already vote to put this out to bid?
I do have the request for, to continue engineering services for Otter Creek for bidding construction phase that's in there, so we probably should have a motion for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, once the bids come in, we'll bring them to you, and then the board will decide what to do with that, so.
Okay.
So I'm just finding us putting out to bid tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this from Otter Creek Engineering and move forward.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you. So we'll get it out to bid right away, and then I'll come back to you all when we have the bids, and we can hopefully have a good conversation then.
All right, I'll probably give a shout tomorrow.
That sounds good, that sounds good, Dave. I'm going to be on the road a little bit, so probably the best time would be about noon.
Okay, great.
I should be sitting in the airport then.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good day.
You too. Take care.
Bye now.
Approved spring road postings, are these exactly the same as every year?
Yep. Well, as far as I know, Chad told me that we're. We actually picked the signs up when we were at our meeting at V-Trans last week.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing's changed.
Yep, have a good night.
All the fun stuff always clears the room, doesn't it?
I know.
Sewerage talk?
That's exciting.
Joe stays for the sewage talk. He's not going anywhere.
Yeah.
I'm just dirty. My head's always...
I set you up for that. I set you up for that, you know. We don't have to do anything, though, on that posting. That's just...
Yeah, no, it's the same as every year, so this is just weight limit for mud season.
Do you guys want to just make a motion that we can press it, just so we'd have it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Yep, second.
Any further discussion about that? Any questions? Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, backhoe repair.
Yeah, so this was unexpected, and actually, Mark and I went and took a look at it today.
Oh, did you?
But, yeah, Chad wrote it up pretty good here. The inner boom and the bucket to boom piston on the backhoe need repair. The inner boom, the metal actually broke at kind of a weak spot in it, and it looked like it'd been working its way for a while from the front. It was still pretty oxidized, and then when it cracked, it was done. So, yeah, the piston went to the shop already. They'll repair that, but the other part needs to be replaced, so. The inner boom is, well, the prices are on there, 4,500 bucks. And it'll take a little while for the parts to get here, as usual, but, so it's over my spending limit. And we'll have to get a quote for what the repair is going to be too, for the labor and stuff, so.
Doesn't seem like we've had that machine that long.
Eight years.
It's a really bad design on the home.
Is it?
Yeah. I went down and looked at it. It's just, that spot's made to break.
Yeah.
They didn't do a very good job.
They cored like a hole in that boom part, and so it's already weak because there's a hole in it.
At a very big stress point.
Yeah.
So it wasn't very good.
It broke right in the center of that ring.
Of course, it'd make it better than it was new.
No, this piece needs to be replaced. Yeah, I mean, they can patch it for the short term, but let's hope they can repair the piston.
Yep.
You know, because that, when it broke, it took the piston out.
And bent it.
It can't be a humongous amount of hours on that machine.
Uh, 3,300.
It looks like cheap steel. It just wasn't a good engineering.
Damn poor.
Because I had the same question. That's why I went down and looked.
Yeah.
Because I couldn't believe it.
Yeah, I know.
That's usually the strongest part, right? It's just not a good design, how they built that hole.
Yeah.
It's not like a deer or a cat. It's weird.
Flimsy.
I think we should really consider hard if we ever have to replace that, not be using a JCB.
Well, if we were to consider an excavator, that we'd still have the need to have a backhoe, wouldn't we?
Well, I think you need the extra loader, you know, because we have our loader, but you have to be able to load trucks.
Right.
If one goes down, you have to have a way to load those trucks. I don't know. He probably can make it go along here, but I think maybe a smaller excavator would be safer and smarter for some of the work on the sides of the road, so.
The biggest problem is the excavator don't move around town like the backhoe does.
You got to try, they got a trailer.
If we got one less than 10,000 pounds, we could trailer it with the trailer we have, so.
I think it's something to consider, but this was really just a poor design, I think.
Yeah.
So the problem now is we don't have anything until we get a part, so fingers crossed, nothing happens.
Yeah.
Well, they are going to try to do a repair on this, that quote, so we will have something.
Yeah, soon.
So it'll at least be back on until we replace it. It looks one of these jobs where even when you fix it, it's going to be a weak point.
Yeah.
So they're not going to be able, you're not going to be able to crank on the stump.
Correcting the problem from the beginning.
Just the way that design is, you're going to have to replace that, I hope, Joe. I think what we need to get from JCB, and I mentioned this today, is maybe some assurances or warranty on that part for a little longer than 3,000 hours.
Yeah, it's not much hours.
Yep.
Very little hours.
They need to guarantee a little bit more on the steel for a $5,000 piece of steel.
And one thing, you know, with JCB, we can't even get it serviced in Vermont anymore, so, you know, that's another thing to consider down the road when we're looking at replacing it, is local, you know, repair places is definitely worth it.
I forget when we bought that, whether we saved a fair bit of money over some other, maybe over deer or something.
I think so.
I kind of forgot, because, I mean, I was here when that thing was purchased, and it just don't seem right that it failed this quick.
I don't think enough brand without a local dealer that's really going to back it up should be even considered, to be honest with you. But, you need a motion.
Yep.
Now, in the piston, we'll see how it gets repaired. Not necessarily we have to buy a piston.
Chad said he thinks they can take it apart and just replace the rod and put everything back together, so, yeah.
So we may not be into the full cost of a piston.
Correct.
There's a, I have a motion that we cover these expenses.
Okay.
With one caveat, is there anything we could claim on insurance?
No.
Probably not. Anyway, yeah, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, zoning issue, so junk ordinance.
So Jeff asked that this be put in the packet. He's looking for authorization to issue tickets, and we thought he already had it, but he says he hasn't. So as you know, we've had a couple of issues around town with junk, and the junk actually encroaching on our right-of-way, which Chief Warful and I have dealt with on one property a few times already. So, but we need to enforce more, so.
So, but just to clarify, he doesn't need our okay to issue tickets, no?
Well, like I said, we thought he already had it, so.
Okay.
Maybe he's just making you aware of it.
Oh, okay. So he's not asking for...
Well, he does, because he says he requests that the health officer...
Well, that's...
Says, "I request the board to specially authorize me to issue notice of violations which would enforce environmental..." Well, the health officer already has, can do a health order anyway, so.
Well, that's why I'm confused. That's really not our purview, but...
Well, he technically is appointed by the board, so you, you know, like, just make a motion.
That's fine. Yeah, I mean, if he's...
So I'll make a motion that Jeff handle whatever rules are on the book in this area and do it in a regular fashion.
Correct, yes. And, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 It's hard to believe we need no rules if we can...
Well, I don't think...
Use the ones we have.
Well, that's what, we just need to be enforcing the ones we have, and...
I think we're kind of looking the other way a little bit, and I think some of these are really a real issue. They've come up numerous times.
Right.
First time they come up, I think we really have to handle it. It's the right thing for the neighbors if there's a problem, so.
All right, we need to be consistent and fair.
Been on battle for quite a while.
There's a few.
With a couple of spots.
Yep. Yeah, one is, you know, once it gets on the right-of-way, I have an issue with that, because that's dangerous.
Well, that's, it is, yeah.
So right-of-way and also a health issue.
Yeah.
Where we've got garbage piled up over there.
Yep.
You know, somebody's not going to want a rat moving in their house next door.
We had one over on the east side of town that Rich actually did a real good job with, so.
Yes.
You know.
Oh, yeah.
They think they need to work together and handle it.
Yep, and follow up, because sometimes they start to, you know, so.
Yep, okay. And lastly, anything on orders?
You dropped them?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions here. Oh, where the heck am I here? Circle here. There was an, well, item number 2562 was...
Thunder tone?
Was 1,142 dollars.
So that was for one of the Durangos.
Must have been some significant repairs made.
Yeah, I can tell you what that one is. Suspension and transmission. Is that one of the ones with the tip-on issue that might have been?
They had what issue?
It's this thing called a tip-on. I don't know if it's like the PCV valve or whatever, but when it doesn't work, nothing works.
Oh.
And we've had issues with it before. I guess it's been ongoing. I'll tell you in a minute.
And that would be in the suspension or transmission?
Yeah, it's a total something performance module that like controls the ECO.
Is it on the transmission?
So here, I'll tell you what happened.
No, actually, I think it's under the hood, but it controls both.
So this one was...
Transmission and the engine.
This one was a 17 Durango. It needed rear suspension subframe bushings. That was shop time. Transmission pan fluid, shop time of removal and repair of transmission pan, gasket hardware, EVAP valve pigtail, and shop time, so.
That should give it a no lease on life, maybe.
I hope so.
To die.
They're not low on miles either, so.
To die, just going to have transmission trouble, so that's just a matter of...
Yep.
Another question I had was item 0825. That one there was Highway Truck 5. PSI repairs. It was 3,600 and something, so that must have been another significant.
So that was the wastewater water truck. Actually, the fuse box caught on fire, and we found out that there was an issue that when whoever put the plow frame and stuff in didn't really secure wires the right way, and they shorted out and caught the truck on fire.
That was Iroquois that put that.
Wonderful.
Oh, my goodness.
And Earls did the repair?
Yes.
So it should be proper.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, boy. All right.
That was the truck you were washing off today, right?
Yes, that was the one. We just got it back today, actually.
So pardon my stupidity, but who's thunder tone?
And there was another significant repair. That was item 0830, fire truck maintenance. That's 2,400, 24 dollars and change. Another...
He does quite a bit of work on our...
Significant repairs.
I've seen it before.
Oh, the 0830, the fire truck.
It must have been...
That was 2,400?
That was, that had to go to New Hampshire for...
Is that the latter truck?
I can't remember now what part was on that, but that had to go to New Hampshire for something, I'll tell you. That's to Eaton, right?
It just kind of caught my eye, because they were fairly, fairly heavy-duty repair bills.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm starting to learn that if it's less than $1,000, it's probably not done right, because everything is, seems to be $1,000 lately.
Okay.
What was the guy's name? Was it Enden or Eaton?
Eaton.
Edward.
Edward.
Vendor number 830.
Something with the transmission or the suspension.
Doesn't say anything on it here.
Well, we got a whole list of stuff. Let's see.
Maintenance, that's what it says.
Eaton Fuller makes transmission.
Uh, front suction valve, clean lubricate, brave valve, front suction plumbing, test valves properly for open and close. So this sounds like it had to do with...
It's a complete over.
With the, when those valves all be for the...
Certification of it.
Yes.
That's what they...
That's what I was thinking of. Yep.
I think, I think Tom said that was going to happen. I think he made a comment on that before.
But a lot of valve replacement here, so. But a lot of valve replacement here, so.
Yeah.
Like one valve was 700 bucks, one was 400 bucks.
Okay.
Does it say one truck?
That's all I had.
Engine number 24.
Is that pumper? I think so.
Imagine if it has that many valves on it, it would be.
They have to be certified, yep.
Some of that fire equipment has to be checked over.
Has to get certified.
You can't use it, I mean.
Well, so we just actually did, I might have told you this the last meeting, Chief Hempel came to me and asked if I could get the league down here to do a walkthrough to see if, how our OSHA compliance was, because he had heard that there were surprise visits happening around the state. So Wade Major came down and did walk through and there were just a couple, some small stuff, but one of the sort of larger ones was the container that they keep their air in and it was out, it was not in compliance. So we actually found a used one. They're placed down in Massachusetts.
Storage place for the air tanks, is that what it is?
Yep, yep, so it's kind of a big, kind of a big deal if we get dinged for it, so. But we found one and I think it's like 2,500 bucks, so they're going to, they're just going through it now and they'll.
I don't know whether OSHA works with municipalities, but in our business, we invited OSHA to come in at one point and check us out and make recommendations and it kind of gives you a.
Get out of jail free card?
Yeah, they give you a free pass for a while by doing that. And it helped our workman's comp.
Yeah, it better did.
A little bit. We, once a month, we have a little short training session, which is good for, you know, helps our comp rate a little bit.
Actually had the guys start doing the, remember when they used to do like tailgate talk? That was a big thing years ago for highway departments. So the league actually has these 15-minute things that the guys are doing now, they're getting together some morning for 15, 20 minutes, going over this and actually signing that they've, you know, been part of it, so Sean and Chad have been really good with that. But Wade from the league, that's why I call them, because they're all, most of those adjusters and things that have worked for OSHA or, you know, know, so he came down and actually, I'm going to have him come down again and go through the rest of our buildings just to make sure that we're good. Cause you know, they'll get you on stupid things like forgetting to initial the fire extinguishers once a month or, you know, so Wade's good with it. He's pretty picky, which we like.
Well, if you work with him, they give you some kind of a little free time.
Yeah, we had some electrical things down there, just some GFIs and stuff that needed to be replaced, so got someone coming next week to go through that. So, yeah, you know, just.
Better than OSHA coming and.
Yeah, that's why we're trying to prevent that. Some tanks that should be stored outside that were inside, you know, things like that, so, but, you know, we're trying to be proactive with it.
All right, well, there's no other questions on the orders. Sign those.
You have banana to me?
Oh, yep.
Oh, thank you.
Huh? Seven to one.
Oh, yeah.
I pace the halls here like every 20.
I know, I drove back from Connecticut today, so I've been sitting too long.
That would be an overnight for me. I wouldn't be able to go to Connecticut and back.
No? It's only like four hours, three and a half, four hours.